Time is seven oh two, call to order, the city of Torrington planning and zoning commission meeting for July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Attendance by zoomer in person at city hall auditorium room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for zoom are available online at www dot Torrington C T dot org slash zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. Call in is one six four six five five eight eighty-six fifty-six. Meeting ID seven ninety-five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty-five. Passcode is nine zero seven one four eight. Item two, serving on the commission this evening remotely is Jim Babinski, Tom Tullman, Donovan Riley, serving in person. Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Lightford. Uh, moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A for June twenty-second, twenty-two. Have a motion.
Like to make a motion move minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Perisino.
Also Jim Babinski.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number four, public hearings beginning at seven P M. July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. City Hall Auditorium Room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Seven oh three, moving out the agenda item number four, A, the special exception twenty-two dash zero four applicant is Hugh Sullivan. Bennett Sullivan Associates Architects, location two oh five West Side Lane. Proposal, construct house addition within front yard setback four point one point nine B. Uh, serving on it, commission this evening remotely Jim Babinski, Tom Tom and Donovan Riley, serving in person Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, myself, Greg Neil. Excuse me, Greg Mealy, also in attendance to our city planner Jeremy Lightford. For this public hearing and the additional ones this evening. The format is the applicant testimony presentation will be made. We'll go to the public, speak in favor. You need to state your name and address for the record. Don't go out to public in opposition, same thing, name and address for the record. The applicant response and summation without the introduction of new material will be made. Applicant has the burden of proving compliance with the regulations, therefore the applicant has the final say. This will be the final testimony. Public hearing will be closed. It's not a debate. All issues and responses will be addressed to the commission. Issues involving building construction, wetlands, past practices or past project completions are not properly before the commission and will not be given. Excuse me, and will be given no weight in any decision. Repetitive objections on the same issue will be given no more weight than the initial objection. Assume that we heard the objection the first time because we have. It will be sufficient to simply concur. Everyone will have the opportunity to be heard and to present relevant testimony. Shouting out comments from the audience will not be tolerated. The same courtesy will be extended to the applicant that you would expect in return. If you have something to add, you must come forward and state it on the record. Uh, is the uh, we have the legal notice, please?
Yes, the planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application and proposed regulation changes on Wednesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, in the city hall auditorium. Room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington. A special exception twenty-two, twenty-two dash zero four applicant Hugh Sullivan. Bennett Sullivan Associates Architects, location two zero five, what side, West Side Lane. Proposal, construct house addition within front yard setback four point one point nine B. Time of hearing seven P M.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco. Is the applicant in attendance, please? Please, thank you.
Commission members, my name is Hugh Sullivan. I'm an architect with Bennett Sullivan Associates. We're located in Southbury, Connecticut. I'm here with my client this evening, Andy Dobos, who is the homeowner. I also have my green cards. May I submit them to you?
Please, and was the sign posted for the duration?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Please. Summary this evening, um, in my package, uh, to meet your requirements, we did submit a survey. Um, and from that survey, uh, the proposal, uh, for the Dobuses was to create, uh, two small additions to the existing home. Uh, from the street, West Side Lane to the left side is a proposed garage in the family room is phase one. And to the right is a master bedroom suite. Um, our issue, uh, why we're here this evening, uh, is we had a setback. Uh, matter that we had to confirm, and your planner was very helpful with, uh, to us regarding the matter. Our existing setback is, uh, forty-six, nine inches from the property line. And we can now add the second phase addition, uh, to forty-six feet, ten inches. So we can abide by your regulation. Uh, there are no issues with coverages. There are no other issues with uh, rear or other setbacks except for the front, and there are no issues with height, uh, for this particular zone. That's my summary to you this evening. It's pretty simple. I would hope that you could support us on this matter.
Thank you, sir. Any commissioners have any comments at this point?
This is, this is septic up there, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So is the, by adding a primary bedroom, you're in compliance with the.
Correct, yeah, and we've been working with the engineers on that as well.
Okay.
Yep. They've done to be one on our day and all that.
Correct, okay, and we've also met with the planner to, uh, uh, capture our rainwater and we have onsite detention as well. Nothing is going off the property.
Very good. So your current infringement on the setback will maintain on the addition, same exact.
It will be one inch back, correct, correct, and that'll be certified by the surveyor for your record.
Anyone remotely, anybody comments?
Nope, all set, Tom Tom.
I do not.
Thank you. Jeremy, you have a memo?
I do. Please. Great, um, in reviewing the applications, uh, the application plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. Hugh Sullivan, Bennett Sullivan Associates, Inc. has filed an application on behalf of the property owners Kathy and Andy Dobus. Two oh five West Side Lane, tax assessor map two sixteen, block zero zero one, lot zero two eight. For a waiver of a portion of the front yard setback requirement under zoning regulation section four point one point nine. This regulation allows by special exception approval encroachment into a required property line setback for construction by no more than the existing building setback or twenty percent of the required setback, whichever is less. The property is located in the R sixty zone and is four point six acres in area. The R sixty zone requires a fifty-foot front yard setback for buildings. The current house, which is pre-existing legal non-conforming, was constructed in nineteen forty-five prior to the adoption of zoning in Torrington. In accordance with the submitted plans, the house is forty-six feet, nine inches at the closest point to the front yard property line. The applicant is requesting two separate additions to their home that encroach to forty-six feet, ten inches from the property line at the closest point. Plans submitted, our title, proposed site plan, Dobus Residence, two oh five West Side Lane, Torrington, Connecticut, zero six seven nine zero. By Bennett Sullivan Associates, Inc., Southbury, Connecticut, revised to June sixth, twenty twenty-two, one sheet. Staff has met previously with the applicant to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other staff comments, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to me dated June eighth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments on the plans. Site plan should have an informational table per section eight point four point three N of the city code. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject properties that require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetland permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping and no additional landscaping is proposed or recommended as part of this application. Suggested retaining as many shrubs as possible and protecting existing mature trees during construction. Lighting, no addition, no, no lighting additions or removals are proposed or recommended as part of this application. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. A sign permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the conservation commission for review and comment. Architectural Review Committee, this project was not referred to the A R C for comment. Economic Development, this application was not referred to Rista Malaka Economic Development Director for Comment. Engineering, Paul Kunsen, city engineer, offered no comments on the proposed plan. Police Traffic, no comments were received from Sergeant Dustin Baldas Police Traffic for this application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Paceta, in an email to me dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, stated that he had no comments on the proposed project. W P C A, W P C A has not, not offered comments on these plans. Building, uh, building official Kevin Gillette, in a letter to me dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, recommended, one, please provide complete sets of I R C section one oh six required construction documents as applicable, prepared by a registered design professional when submitting the required permit applications. Two, subject to review and onsite correction. Three, it shall be the duty of the permit holder or their agent to notify the building official that such work is ready for inspection. Conclusion, I recommend approval of the special exception twenty-two dash zero four to construct a home addition within the front yard setback in accordance with section four point one point nine of the zoning regulations and submitted plans with the following conditions and recommendations. One, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette, contained in his letter to the city planner dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Two, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his June eighth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Three, the special exception shall be recorded in the city land records by the applicant in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash three D.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do any commissioners have any comments?
Um, I just, uh, am, have a question. It states that it was built in nineteen twenty-five and the memo says nineteen forty-five. Was it nineteen twenty-five? Nineteen twenty-five was the year it was.
It is nineteen forty-five.
Okay.
Yep.
So the print's incorrect.
The print says nineteen twenty-five.
Anyone else? Does the applicant have anything to summarize or you're good?
On the process, we didn't understand, uh, but doing this a while, that regulation, I had to have Mr. Leifert try to explain it to me three times. Um, after he got done with it, I understood it. I was kind of doing it backwards despite that. It was great working with the planning office because they were very helpful to us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? We're good.
Five seven fourteen, I declare this public hearing closed and Greco has got a memo.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception twenty-two dash zero four applicant Hugh Sullivan Bennett Sullivan Associates Architects, location two zero five West Side Lane. Proposal, construct house addition within front yard setback four point one point nine B with the following conditions. One, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette, contained in his letter to the city planner dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Two, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his June eighth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Three, the special exception shall be recorded in the city land records by the applicant in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash three D.
I second.
Those in favor?
Fine.
Hi.
Some of, good luck, sir. Seven fifteen, moving out to agenda item number four, B, special exception twenty-two dash zero five applicant Edward Townsend. Location one sixty-five Hawthorne Terrace, proposal, construct house addition within front yard setback four point one point nine B. Serving on the commission this evening is Jim Babinski, Tom Tom and Donovan Riley, serving remotely, uh, in person Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance to our city planner Jeremy Lightford. Commissioner Greco, do you have the legal notice, please?
The planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing the following applicant, application and proposed regulation changes on Wednesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, in the city hall auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington. Special exception twenty-two dash zero, is that a five versus five applicant Edward Townsend, location one sixty-five Hawthorne Terrace. Proposal, construct house addition within front yard setback four point one point nine B. Time of hearing immediately following the close of the first public hearing beginning at seven P M.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco. Uh, is the applicant in attendance?
Townsend.
Do you state your name and address for the record, please?
Edward Townsend, uh, one six five Hawthorne Terrace, Torrington, Connecticut, zero six seven nine zero.
Thank you. Do you have the green cards for the mailings?
Yes, I do.
Please, and was assigned posted for the required time? Give us a brief overview of what you're trying to do, sir?
Uh, small addition off to, um, are you guys looking at the survey? A small addition off the side of the house. Then a front yard setback.
So you're encroaching on the twenty-five yards.
Yes, correct, from the street. I don't know the exact measurements on how far I'm encroaching, but it's, it's not much. Maybe a foot.
Two point three feet.
Two point three, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Any commissioners have any questions at this point?
Well, the building is already encroached.
Right. So it's pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yep.
Jeremy, you have a memo?
I do.
Please.
All right. Um, in reviewing the application plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. Property owner Edward Townsend, one sixty-five Hawthorne Terrace, tax assessor map one ten, block zero zero six, lot zero one seven. Has filed an application for a waiver of a portion of the front yard setback required under zoning regulation section four point one point nine. This regulation allows by special exception approval encroachment into a required property line setback for construction by no more than the existing building setback or twenty percent of the setback, the required setback, whichever is less. The property is located in the R ten S zone and is zero point three acres in area. The R ten S zone requires a twenty-five foot front yard setback for buildings. The current house, which is pre-existing legal non-conforming, was constructed in nineteen fifty prior to the adoption of zoning in Torrington. In accordance with the submitted plans, the house is twelve point five feet at the closest point to the front yard property line. The applicant is requesting a motor room addition to their home that encroaches to twenty-two point seven feet from the front property line at the closest point. Plans submitted, our title zoning location survey prepared for Edward J. Townsend, one sixty-five Hawthorne Terrace, Torrington, Connecticut. By Timothy G. Wiley, Jr., land surveyor, Barkhamstead, Connecticut, dated April twenty twenty-two, one sheet. Staff has met previously with the applicant to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other staff comments, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to me dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comment on the plans. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject properties that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required for this, to this, prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, no additional landscaping is proposed or recommended as part of this application. Suggest retaining as many shrubs as possible and protecting existing mature trees during construction. Lighting, no lighting additions or removals are proposed or recommended as part of this application. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. A sign permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the conservation commission for review and comment. Architectural Review Committee, this project was not referred to the A R C for comment. Economic Development, this application was not referred to Rista Malaka Economic Development Director for Comment. Engineering, Paul Kunsen, city engineer, offered no comments on the proposed plan. Police Traffic, no comments were received from Sergeant Dustin Baldas Police Traffic for this application. Fire, uh, Fire Marshal Edward Paceta, in an email to me dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, stated that he had no comments on the proposed project. W P C A, W P C A has not offered comments on these plans. Uh, building, building official Kevin Gillette, in a letter to me dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, recommended, one, please provide complete sets of I R C section one oh six required construction documents as applicable. Prepared by a registered design professional when submitting the required permit applications. Two, subject to review and onsite correction. Three, it shall be the duty of the permit holder or their agent to notify the building official that such work is ready for inspection. Uh, conclusion, I recommend the, I recommend approval of special exception twenty-two dash zero five to construct a home addition within the front yard setback at one sixty-five Hawthorne Terrace in accordance with section four point one point nine of the zoning regulations and submitted plans with the following conditions and recommendations. One is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette, contained in his letter to the city planner dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And two, special exceptions shall be reported in the city land records by the applicant in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes Section eight dash three D prior to issuance of zoning permits for construction.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any commissioners have any questions? I'll go to the public. Anyone want to speak in favor of this application? Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Being none, we're all set. No, the commissioners have any comments? The time is seven twenty-three. I declare this public hearing closed. And Commissioner Greco will read a memo, uh, motion, excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception twenty-two dash zero five applicant Edward Townsend, location one sixty-five Hawthorne Terrace. Proposal, construct house addition within front yard setback four point one point nine B with the following conditions. One, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette, contained in his letter to the city planner dated June twenty twenty twenty-two. Two, the special exception shall be reported in the city land records by the applicant accordance, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash three D.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Hi.
I opposed, so move, good luck, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jeremy.
The time is seven twenty-four, moving on to agenda item number four, C, proposed amendments to the city of Torrington zoning regulations. The applicant is a Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission. Proposal, one, propose amendments to section three point one and four point one six recreational cannabis. Two, repeal the temporary and limited moratorium on cannabis establishments, section five point one nine. Serving on the commission this evening is, uh, serving on the commission this evening is Donovan Riley, uh, Jim Babinski, Tom Tullman, serving remotely in person, Diane Greco. Excuse me, yeah, Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance to our city planner Jeremy Lightford. Uh, do you have the legal notice, Donna?
I do. The planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following applications and proposed regulation changes on Wednesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, in the city hall auditorium room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington. Proposed amendment, city of Torrington zoning regulations. Applicant, Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal, one, proposed amendments to sections three point one and four point one six recreational cannabis. Two, repeal temporary and limited moratorium on cannabis establishment, section five point one nine. Time of hearing immediately following the close of the second public hearing.
Thank you, Donna. Jeremy, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, just to, just to kick things off, I just wanted to, uh, I just wanted to run over, uh, all the items that we have in the, um, in the record. Besides what might be introduced tonight, um, just so we, we make sure to get all our documents on the record. Uh, so we have the proposed amendments to section three point one and four point one six. We have the, uh, language on the, on the limited moratorium. Uh, we have the, the, uh, we have the, uh, hand-delivered, um, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the hand-delivered, uh, notice to the city clerk, the Torrington city clerk for the proposed amendment stated June twenty-ninth. Uh, we have the referral to the Northwest Hills Cog, uh, Council of Governments, um, for the proposed amendment stated June twenty-ninth. We have a copy of, um, Public Act twenty-one dash one in its entirety. Uh, we have a copy of Public Act twenty-two dash one oh three. We have the, uh, Office of Legislative Research Bill Analysis of H B five three two nine, which became Public Act twenty-two dash one zero three. We have a, um, PowerPoint presentation that was given at our February sixteenth joint meeting. Uh, I, we have, um, the memo from myself to the, to the, uh, for the joint committee meeting from February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. We have the regulations from the town of Middletown. We have, uh, I can't, on cannabis, we have the regulations on cannabis from the city of Bridgeport. Uh, we have analysis of, of communities throughout the state and, and what they've done with their regulations dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. We have a basic tax revenue, possible tax revenue calculation submitted by the mayor for our April twentieth, twenty twenty-two, um, joint meeting. We have an article from Planning Magazine, um, regarding legal, uh, legal cannabis. Um, we have, uh, news article on social equity council recommendations dated December eighth, twenty twenty-one. We have another news article from the current, um, the Hartford Current from, let's see, a date, oh, twelve eight twenty-one. We have a, um, basically a marijuana timeline, um, of, of marijuana laws in the country that was printed two fifteen twenty-two. We have reduced size maps of five hundred foot buffer, um, of our, from our, I guess we call them sensitive uses, which I'll elaborate on in, in, in the other memo that I have. Um, and then, uh, we have our, our entire record from, from the adoption of the, um, moratorium that was adopted last year, last September.
Want to kick off and get your memo, check on here and go from there, please?
Yes. Right. Um, subject proposed regulation changes adult use cannabis retail establishments, sections three point one, four point one six and five point one nine. On June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, Public Act twenty-one dash one was signed into law that permitted recreational adult use cannabis along with retail sales, cultivation and micro cultivation under state regulations administered by the Department of Consumer Protection. The law also authorized municipalities to adopt zoning regulations or ordinances to, A, prohibit cannabis retail or cultivation uses from locating in the municipality. Or B, adopt regulations or ordinances under certain state guidelines to allow the cannabis retailer cultivation businesses with reasonable restrictions. If any municipality takes no action, the establishments would be allowed and regulated as similar uses would be, um, i.e. retail or manufacturing. The initial law under Public Act twenty-one dash one limited the city of Torrington to no more than one retail location and one cultivator or micro cultivator based on the population of the city. However, a new law, Public Act. However, a new law, public act twenty two dash one zero three was signed into law on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. Which removed the limits on the number of licenses granted to individual municipalities. The number of licenses granted is controlled by the state of Connecticut through the Department of Consumer Protection in addition to local approval powers. The municipality collects a tax of three percent on all sales from retail locations and cultivators. For use under certain program restrictions by the municipality. Within the city government, in order to plan for the rollout of these new state laws. Two open joint meetings were held between the city council. The planning and zoning commission and the board of public safety on February sixteenth, twenty twenty two and April twentieth, twenty twenty two. To discuss the position of the city in allowing the uses and the process by which to license the uses. The joint boards discussed and considered topics such as potential numbers of licenses. Pursued perceived increase in crime rates. Effects on the community and the potential benefits and uses for the three percent sales tax to the community. Options discussed were one prohibiting the uses. Two adopting regulations by ordinance through the city council. Three adopting regulations as part of the zoning regulations through the planning and zoning commission. And four placing a yes, no referendum question on the November election ballot. For allowing or prohibiting the sales or cultivation. The joint committees ultimately decided after careful consideration and discussion. To send a decision of local regulatory controls to the planning and zoning commission to adopt through zoning regulations. The planning and zoning commission discussed and reviewed draft regulation amendments at their May twenty fifth, June eighth and June twenty second commission meetings. Based on those discussions and comments on the draft language. I am submitting, submitting the following proposed regulations. One, to allow the cultivation or micro cultivation under the current regulations. As a manufacturing use in section three point one subsection nineteen point zero zero. No amendments to the regulations are necessary to allow this use. Within public act twenty one dash one, section one forty three. The production and cultivation of cannabis is not considered an agricultural activity for the purposes of regulation. It is considered a manufacturing slash production use. And subsequent proposals for cultivators or micro cultivators would be allowed in the I or I P zones under those use regulations. Number two, to add a new use in the use table section three point one as a new subsection twenty two. Point zero three adult use cannabis retail establishments. Number three, to amend section four point one six alternate incarceration medical marijuana dispensary overlay zone. To add adult use cannabis retail establishments to section four point one six point three. And add a new section four point one, four point sixteen point six F. To require mapping of sensitive uses within five hundred feet of a proposed retail establishment location. And number four, general language and formatting cleanup in sections three point one and four point one six. The typical process for a new retail cannabis use would be similar to the existing medical marijuana procedures. The applicant would simultaneously apply for a zone change. And a site plan approval to both adopt an overlay zone on the subject property. And review the site for design suitability. The review would be subject to the criteria contained in zoning regulations section four point one six A M zone. Eight point four site plan review and eight point seven point one change of zoning district boundary. To aid the commission in reviewing site suitability for the overlay zone. A map of all properties located within five hundred feet. Of the proposed retail location is required specifically identifying all public parks. Public playgrounds, schools, recreational facilities, childcare centers or libraries. The commission would review the proximity to these locations in deciding on the adoption of the A M overlay zone. While not proposed as a strict separation distance, this gives the commission maximum discretion. On the adoption or denial of the overlay zone based on the proximity to these sensitive uses. And other location related factors. The process would also be required for accessory retail cannabis use proposals under section. Five point two point six retail as an accessory use. The proposed amendments to the zoning regulations are not in conflict with the plan of conservation and development. I would recommend adoption of the proposed text amendments with an adoption. With an adoption effective the day after the date of the publication of approval. As part of these regulation amendments, I am also proposing to repeal section five point one nine. Temporary and limited moratorium on cannabis establishments. With an effective date, the same day that these regulations become effective.
Thank you, Jeremy. The commissioners have any comments? At this point?
Not yet.
Anyone remotely have any comments?
Oh, no, that's, that was the, uh, moratorium language that's already in our regs, I'm just, I was just making it part of the.
What about this one here?
Yeah, so, so we can go through the details, but I went through the basics in the, in the memo.
Just one details.
Yeah. So, um, starting in section three point one. Yeah, I think that's the front page, right, yeah. Um, you can see in, in red on the proposal, um, I struck the word marijuana. And on, on the old twenty two O two, that's, that was just to clean up, I struck the word marijuana and substituted cannabis. Um, because those are the references used in state law. And then I added in red section twenty two dash zero three, don't use cannabis retail establishments. Um, and that's still, that's the whole section on the A M zone, so it's not, it wouldn't be a change in how we have. I mean, for the last few years, um, reviewed the medical marijuana. And then the draft regs. Um, again, right, right at the beginning in, in section four, well, in the title section, I substituted the word cannabis. Throughout section four point sixteen point one, the, the preamble, the purpose, just substituted the word cannabis. Down in four point one six point three, um, you can see in red, I added the following, you, you know, to the following uses that shall be permitted. Adult use cannabis retail establishments. And on the second page, I added a new section F, it would be. Four point ones, four point sixteen point six F. And it says for all new, all new proposed adult use cannabis retail establishment locations. A map shall also be provided drawn to scale showing all parcels within five hundred feet of the proposed retail establishment. Which specifically highlights all parcels with the following uses. Public parks, public playgrounds, schools, recreational facilities, childcare centers, libraries. The commission may deny applications to apply the A M overlay zone or special exception, actually that should say site plan, I'm sorry. So, good thing I'm reading this, that should say site plan. Overlay zone or site plan based on proximity to the above uses. If found to be in conflict with the standards set forth in this section and section eight point two.
Turning back to four point sixteen point six, uh, I believe we had discussed. Churches with the, uh, onset of so many pop up style. Houses of worship, we've shied away from that, correct?
Yeah, and it's, it's, um, it's places of worship, so it's not just churches, it's any, any place where. There's no, there's no restrictions on where any of these, they can operate out of a house or out of a, of a storefront or out of a. You know, stone church or mosque or, or anything of that sort, so, uh.
But we, but we intended for this particular part of it, is vague enough. Yeah, to give us as much layaway as possible when we see the.
Right.
And, um. I did read this in as part of the, this part of the, um.
That that's included.
Yeah, I better do this since, since I'm here, hang on one sec. It's not going to fit the whole thing, but.
You get the idea.
Yeah. So this, this map, um, when it was produced, actually did include. What houses of worship we knew of, um. But doesn't, it, it does, it doesn't catch all of them because we have some store, some storefront. Places of worship and again, like. Random, you know, congregation areas that, that are all going to be called out on this map. This is basically the stone, the, you know, stone churches and the other ones that, that can easily be served on this map.
Now, in this, our three point one, uh, the amendments there, what about the, uh? Cultivators are multiple micro cultivators.
So I, I, in our previous conversations in our, in our joint meetings, we just decided to allow those as a main. Because it's not, it's not an agricultural use, it's specifically a production or manufacturing use.
So those manufacturings are typically in the I and I P zones.
Yes, only allowed nine IP.
So that's the primitive zones.
Yeah, we just, because when we don't take action, it just kicks in as a similar use.
And, uh, and in the, uh, retail environment is, is local.
So it's, it's actually.
You could be.
So for four point one six point two of the, of the regulation. The overlay zone may not be applied to any lots located in downtown. Basically any residential zone, so it's, so it's L B. Uh, industrial or industrial park.
Okay, L B I R I P.
Yeah, that we, that we have the option of adopting the overlay zone.
I believe as we have mentioned before, in the industrial zone, they can have a, a small.
It's small, right?
Uh, retail slash.
We have, yeah, we have a regulation.
Yeah, it's, it's a proportion, it, it's a proportion of the, of the, the total square footage or five hundred, whichever is less. Yeah. So it's supposed to, it, those are, those are like if you have a manufacturing use, you want to put a little tiny, little tiny store in the corner, yeah. But we're, we have to, for even those types of sales, the way it's written, we have to adopt an overlay zone in order to do that.
Any commissioners have any comments at this point? I'll go to the public, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Kandfer, eighteen twenty one Winston Road. My opposition. Is, uh. It's got like two parts. First. The regu- regulations as, as you have written, um. I believe are inadequate. And then. The second part is. The, uh. State regulations. Are significantly flawed and, and that, uh, impacts. Some desirable ways in which. You can craft your local regulations. And then on top of that, the state regulations really there, uh, you know, they, they have a lot of objectives, uh. Social equity objectives and things, but as, as you read into it and things, they're. They're not going to achieve that and they're going to be, uh, and they talk about, oh yeah, it's going to be, uh, it's all going to be, uh, fine, we're going to. We're going to get the, uh, we're going to kind of reduce illegal use, but. It's not going to happen, okay, let me start out with the, uh. What you have, your, uh, your draft document right now, um. The, uh. I think you need, uh, some more definitions and you need to change some definitions. Okay, first of all. You state adult use cannabis retail establishment. Now, I'm having difficulty. Reconciling, reconciling that with what is in the state statutes. Now, if. The, 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 the state statutes has, has eleven categories. There's three growers. A cultivator, a micro cultivator and a producer, that producer is, is the, uh. The, the grower who, who supplies solely. The dispensers right now, okay, and you have, you have, uh, three. Three of these state. Defined retail uses, it's a retailer. A hybrid retailer, which is, which is the, uh, the, the basic retailer in, in the medical dispensary. And you have a dispensary facility which is exclusive for that purpose. So you, so that's six already, now. You have three manufacturers. Food and beverage, product manufacturer and product packaging. And then the last two is those delivery services and then the transporter who shuttles things between all these different places. Now. You know what, you need to, need to get, that needs to be clarified because is, uh. Are you saying that, uh, are you? Are you in your, in your, in your, in your agreement or regulation, are you prohibiting any of the eleven, eleven? Because you're stating retail in the, in that, in that, uh. In that term and, uh. I think you should. You need to massage this thing a little bit further because you have. You have three producers, now do you want those, are you saying this, say for example, I'm reading and I'm saying, okay, your adult use, uh. Cannabis, uh, retail establishments, okay, I'm saying, well, if that includes. Everything else is, beyond the cultivators, then are you permitting, uh? These manufacturers in local business like you would with any, any other retailer? No, I don't think so, but so. Consider that, work on that, the, uh, the, uh. Now. When. Okay, you've adopted cannabis cultivation. Is not being agriculture or farming, that's, the state is, that's what the state says, okay, you adopted, okay, that's fine, but I think you need to. Explain that in, in your, in your regulations, uh, or someplace, uh, now. Another thing is, uh. You have, I read your, uh. Uh, definitions, you have, you have a term farm. Let me read it, is what I, what it says, a lot with a minimum area of three acres. That is used for the raising of plants. Or farm animals. You can't deny cannabis is a plant. You can say cannabis cultivation is manufactured, but you can't say cannabis is not a plant, so what, that's simple solution, just put in there. After plants in parentheses excluding cannabis. That's a simple, uh, you know, simple thing there, uh, so it's clear, you know, I mean, so people know because you got farming, look at. Look at, look at where you have farming, you have farming in, in multiple, multiple residential zones. And you don't, you don't want, you don't want, I don't think you want, uh, like take these, uh. Take these, uh, cultivators. So it's, it's, it's a, uh.
Just interrupt one second. That state is issuing the permits for cultivators, growers.
Yes.
And retail, so a farm would be considered private. All right, and for a farm to grow as a grower, it would have to have a permit to be able to do that.
Sure.
So if it's private, then it's regulated by state statute. It defines how many plants you could grow as a private citizen, which you can, and I believe it's three, or something like that. So I don't think there's any, well, where there might be some confusion on the part of the public. And don't think from the regulation standpoint and how it was written, if there's any confusion at all.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm talking, I'm not talking, I'm not a, uh, I'm not a, uh, zoning official, you know.
I'm just trying to help you understand, you know, where it comes from.
Okay.
And why, why it's unnecessary to really go further than that.
All right, I'm just throwing suggestions out, you can do as you may, you know, um, but I, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to throw these out. And, uh, you know, you can trash can anything I say tonight, all of it, or.
Well, I don't want to trash can, I'd like you to.
I'm taking, I'm taking notes.
Just want you to understand.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
An open forum here, sir.
Yeah, right. I want to, I want to just present, present what I got here and then you could do what you want. Now, uh, the, uh, let's see, where was I? I talked about, uh, 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 this, uh, uh, for, uh, this situation with cannabis is, uh, cultivation is not farming or agriculture. I just, I just want to throw out for what it's worth. Hemp is an agricultural product in Connecticut.
So, so I just, I, I'll just, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you again, but, but hemp was excluded from that. So hemp is still an agricultural product?
Yes, yes. I'm just, I just wrote it out and, you know, because ev- eventually, as I read the regulations, I read, I read, I read all those regulations, most of them. And, uh, the, uh, there's a section where they're, they're talking about possibly integrating this whole hemp production into this, this master regulation that the state has. It's going to be a study. I think this was completed by the first of next year, uh, because you know, uh, hemp is cannabis sativa. Cannabis is cannabis sativa. It's just the variety and the THC content, okay? Just, uh, throwing that out there, uh, so, uh, okay. Okay. Now, uh, you, 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 you are allowed of, uh, setting hours and I noticed, I also looked at some, uh, it's some, uh, you mentioned, uh, some towns, middle town and some others that you looked at the regulations. I looked at, uh, East Hartford and they, they, uh, they put some, uh, our, uh, some very broad hour restrictions. So take, take retail, I, I don't know, you, you want, you know, you may not want it, uh, between midnight and six AM. I'm just saying, you know, I don't, it's something as minimal as that. I, I'm throwing it out there for your considerations. Maybe you don't want to do that, it doesn't matter. Now, as it pertains to the state law, it has, has strengths, but it's got a lot of, a lot of, uh, weaknesses. The, the one that I, first of all, the one I don't like is this, the, the limits on, on, on any of these establishments. You either have to ban one of those eleven or you have to accept any and all that are licensed and are interested in moving to Torrington and establish a business here. So that's, that's a little bit, uh, too much. I think I, I would like to see, you know, you, you've got limiting the limits on where they can be located, but still, uh, that's, uh, uh, that's a bit of a problem, uh, for me, the, uh, now, the, uh,
Can I interrupt you one minute, sir? Uh, just in regards, you, you mentioned, uh, the hours and so forth, the substitute house bill number fifty three twenty nine. Section B, any municipality made by amendment or such municipality zoning regulations or by local ordinance, one prohibit the establishment of cannabis establishment. Or two, establish reasonable restrictions regarding the hours and signage within the limits of such municipality. You know, so it's being dictated by the state that this can be done, limit hours and so.
So you don't need to put it in the medium, so maybe you don't need to put it in the regulation.
You know, so it's done, uh.
And, uh, the question is, do we, do we want it on a case by case basis without putting up a number in there or do we want to put an actual number in there?
Rather see it as more flexible.
Yeah.
As soon as we.
Nobody can operate after.
As we put a number down, we stitch ourselves.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, uh, I, I, I'm not, okay, you can debate this after I finish. Okay, uh, the, uh, now, uh, let's see what I wrote here. Now I have, uh, I had, you know, your, your map, your map there and, uh, I did something myself. I found out the, uh, where the three census tracts in Torrington are. There's a map online. You see this shape here, uh, you know, and I, this is from the town line, south end, coming into downtown and going up here. Towards, uh, like, uh, Brunswick and got a way out to West Torrington intersection there. Okay. I just, I put that in there because as you know, there are sixteen social equity firms that are interested in going into uh, uh, these DIA's disproportionately impacted areas. Okay. And we have three. Connecticut has two hundred, but in, in total, Connecticut has, uh, eight hundred and thirty three census tracts. A census tract is like, the population is like, uh, up to four thousand generally. And they're all different shapes, uh, because of that. So two, two, two hundred, eight hundred and thirty three, maybe twenty four percent of the state is where these sixteen social equity, uh, cultivators can go. Now, in Litchfield County, there are only four. The fourth one is the whole town at Morris. Because it's so small, you know, the population, it's only like maybe twenty, twenty-five hundred or less population, but the whole town qualified because they had an unemployment rate of twelve percent. So, but what I'm getting at is, uh, the, uh, I took, I took these, this is my, uh, at homework. I took the, took these, uh, three census tracts. Then I penciled, I penned, I penned in your, your DD zone to see what, 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 uh, how it would impact it. So, uh, you know, and I, I, I think this is something that it would be instructive that you have maybe Dave, sure, do that to show you in those three census zones. For, for example, let me, let me, uh, let me mention some things that I looked at.
You're talking, excuse me, you're talking to DD zone?
Yeah, DD is not allowed.
It's not allowed.
No, 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 what I'm, what I'm getting is, you see here in green?
Yes, sir.
The DD zone, this census tract has plenty of other spaces where you could.
Besides the DD.
Besides the DD. I, I put in both just to see what, like, like, for example, up in this area, that old former Brunswick, you know, that Brunswick establishment, you know, you got it there because of, uh, you've got some, uh, you got because of the Charlie Invest Park there, you know, you got maybe a little bit there, but, but you've got, you've got some yellow there that may be qualifying. Like take, okay, take, uh, take the, take, uh, in this other, uh, census tract, the, uh, it would allow say for, say, uh, what's, what's the name of it? Nidek, uh, on Franklin, Franklin Drive? That is not in your, your DD zone and it's zone industrial. And it's right next to electrical, because these, these, uh, cultivators, they're high, this, this is all going to be indoors in some fashion. It's a high, high electric demand, uh, operation. You know, so I'm getting, what I'm getting at is, is that, uh, it would be, it would be instructive to look at that. Uh, and I can leave, you know, I mean, you could, you could do it by yourself, but I, I can give you the reference where you get all this information. It's all like here. Data CT dot gov and all this stuff.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
I just couldn't give it to you, I'll give it to you, because I don't need it, because, yeah.
Right.
I, I'm a decision maker. The, uh, uh, I'll give you that, the, uh, now, uh, I, I'm going to go on to taxes. Not revenues, you know, revenues, taxes. Okay. In a, in a medical dispensary, you can go in there and there's no tax for the, for the patient to buy the products and, uh, but of course, uh, no health insurance is going to cover that either. But for the retail, the state has three taxes on a retail cannabis product. They have a basic six and three quarter sales tax. You have this three percent bonus for the municipalities and then you have a, uh, I'd call, I'm going to call it like an excise tax on, it's based on potency of the product. It's like so many, uh, fractions of a cent per milligram. So, so, so you add those up. Now, this is what the state, the state, the state suggested, had, had one, one, um, question and answer thing I looked at and it said that, uh, this, this little excise tax that I'm talking about, it could range between ten and fifteen percent. So you add them all together, you get over twenty percent tax on a product. That twenty percent tax is going to make it more attractive for the illegal trade, you know, or moving on to, you know, moving on to another state maybe for, for a better deal. So I don't, I, I really don't, I really don't like the, 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 the major, uh, the huge taxing, you know, and, and it would encourage, say, say, for example, I was a patient. Okay, I get it. I get it without any tax. I got a little leftover. And maybe I sell it, a little side hustle, because I, because I got it twenty percent less. I can give you, I can give the I twenty six discount. I'm not saying anybody's going to do that, but it's going to cross somebody's mind. The, uh, so, uh, I wish, you know, I wish there was, uh, a way to, uh, you know, some of the, well, let me, let me back up here. Some of the inequity in, in all this thing is, uh, the state law suggests that you're going to give, we're going to give these social equity applicants a leg up first out of the gate. Well, there's two other entities, two other entities who are in a non, the non, the non, not, not lottery status. There's four Connecticut cultivators, I'm not cultivating producers for medical marijuana. And they could apply for a ex- extended or expanded producer license, so they could be growing both. It's the same, it would be the same plant, I guess, the same plant for, for retail, uh, use and for, uh, medical use. So now, I'm one, you know, I, I'm wondering, uh, right, is the state going to approve those people first and give them a double, the double leg up? Cause they're, cause all the, these, these facilities are, are, uh, growing and now they've, they've invested all the money in the plant and, and everything. And, uh, it, it would be easy to add some more square foot for this sort of thing. The same for the dispensaries. Dispensaries, uh, uh, they could, uh, they could apply for a hybrid retail and then, uh, you know, I imagine some of the same products that they're selling over here for the medical, for, for the medical patient, they'd be available for, for them. It's, it's kind of like a, you know, uh, like a thing that mo- most of those, uh, dispensaries may, may take, may take advantage of. So, so I, I, I don't like that, uh, that's, that's, it just makes us, so what, how do we go? How do I fight hard for, you know, the, uh, that's what I'm going to propose to you, the, the, uh, you know, you want, if we're going ahead with this, you, you want to get, uh, get started because, you know, we got three out of two hundred of the, of these DIA's cultivators in town. You have plenty of space to do this and, uh, potential spaces, uh, so uh, uh, here's where I am. I'm not fully, uh, fully, uh, finished with this, but I'd like to say maybe approve uh, cultivators and, uh, these, uh, micro cultivators. And then, uh, hold off on the rest of them. That's my recommendation. And then while, while at the same time, the city, not just me, Tom Torrington, complaining to the state, to the, to the executive branch and the legislature about, let's modify, let's modify these regulations the second time to, uh, to clarify this and get and, and allow, you know, some limits, because right now, look, look at, look at what, look at what's happened, happening. This regulation as far as, uh, uh, allowing, uh, establishments in these eleven, eleven categories. This round one has, has, has been, has been completed for the applications. So there's, uh, uh, they're vying for, uh, I think it's like fifty-six slots. So many, uh, so many, uh, retail establishments, so many, uh, producers and all this. And, but there's no, there's no control on the Department of Consumer Protection. Oh, well, we finish with these, this is all we can handle right now. We finish with these. All right, let's open the second round and let's, uh, go with a hundred and fifty-six. Let's allow another hundred, because there's, there's thousands of people that have been applying for this, thinking this is their road to riches. Uh, so, uh, I would like to, uh, encourage the city, I'll speak with the city council that maybe we should, uh, formally the city, uh, ask for some improvements, uh, some of what I suggested or some other ones to make this, to make it work, uh, appropriately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Evening commissioners, my name's David Reynolds. I'm sixty-nine Wedgewood Drive, uh, in Torrington, Connecticut. I've glad to live in Torrington for over forty years, uh, and like you, have volunteered numerous hours into making the city a better city. I've served on the Board of Education in the eighties, City Council in the nineties, Chairman of Fish for many years in the late eighties and the nineties. And then when I became, I moved away from politics, I became an active deacon, an ordained deacon in the Catholic Church. Uh, I've served many years here in Torrington, now I'm in Harlestown, New Hartford. I guess I feel a little uncomfortable kind of being here today, because as far as I know, this is the first public hearing our town city government has had on the cannabis or marijuana proposals. Uh, you can correct me, but I know the city council has not had a public hearing on this issue. I did speak to him very early on when the bill just passed very briefly at an open comment. It was met at that time told there was going to be a public hearing. And then we find tonight, and I've triggered her memory, that several committees have joint meetings, but there was still no public hearing to get public input on this very important proposal that not only has to do with zoning, which you gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, deal with, which is very important to the quality of life in a city, but it goes well beyond that. So today I'm coming to speak in front of this committee, because it's the only public hearing I have. And in some ways I feel I'm readdressing issues that possibly this commission doesn't usually hear about. We hear, you hear about frontage, about, you know, zoning, types of zoning, what's allowed, traffic control, type of things like that. We hear about frontage, about, you know, zoning, types of zoning, what's allowed, traffic control, type of things like that. But really, you're, you're facing to tonight an issue that can severely impact the quality of life in Torrington, as it has in many of the states that have legalized recreational marijuana. And I don't know where you've gotten input or, so I'm going to share information that I have. Now, as a deacon in the Catholic Church, I've spent the last 18 years representing the Catholic bishops at state legislature. And one of the issues they addressed was their opposition to the legalization of recreational marijuana in our state. And the churches, the Catholic churches opposed it in other states too. But during that process, I was united with very many variety of groups. And I mentioned that in some of these comments, you have some notes on my comments in front of you. These were informal group that came together. And this group included community youth organizations, anti-drug organizations for youth, health professionals, if you know Connecticut Medical Society, American Medical Association, other medical associations oppose legalization of recreational marijuana. And also educators and diverse variety of churches. It was very funny to meet with pastors in the inner city from the black churches, Hispanic churches, and have them in their congregations vehemently opposed to the legalization of recreational marijuana in their communities. But have their politicians be up at the state Capitol advocating for what they call social equity, which would inundate those same communities and give priority to the sale and production of recreational marijuana. Kind of ironic, there's a conflict there. But I'm speaking to you tonight before you is in opposition to the regulations that have been presented. I appreciate the great work the city planners put into this. But I would prefer, much prefer that this planning and zoning commission and the city council, if they wish, because the city council could immediately pass an ordinance banning the sale and cultivation of marijuana in the city of Torrington. They just have to pass it. I list here in my notes several communities that already have Avon, Bethlehem, Clinton, Greenwich, Rodden, Middlefield, Milford, New Canaan, Newtown, Old Line, Prospect, Southington, Wallingford, Watertown, Weston, Westport, and Woodbury. And I took those from a list that was very early on in 2022. So I don't know if there's additional towns to that, but towns have stood up and said, this is not what we want to introduce into our community. It brings with it too many headaches, too many problems, increased drug abuse. All the problems that we think it's supposed to go do away with, it doesn't. So I'll get it addressed. And I'd also like to note too, I think I want to give a little shout out to our two state reps, Representative Case and Representative Cook. They both voted against this legislation, just so the committee members will know. And also I realized that Torrington already has a medical dispensary, marijuana dispensary within its boundaries. And people don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that. In fact, the medical community endorsed medical marijuana in the dispensaries. The same organizations that endorsed the medical dispensaries opposed the recreational facilities and sale of marijuana, the same ones, very same ones. First of all, I'd like to say, as I go through my notes here, that there's really no benefit to a town for allowing the sale and cultivation of marijuana within its boundaries, none. It's a no win situation financially and socially. The health concerns raised by the legalization of recreational marijuana and the impact on young people far away any benefits. The first reason, and they're not in any particular order. The first reason commonly given is support the sale and cultivation of recreational marijuana is the potential for job creation. Well, the job creation you're talking about is job creation on the drug market. Okay, the purposes of recreational sales or retail outlets is to sell drugs. Marijuana is a drug, it's a licensed drug under federal law. And I'll talk more about the potency of that drug that they sell in a minute. So I'd rather see other stores, this town and city work to bring other retail establishments in, legitimate retail establishments, more restaurants, small businesses, same amount of jobs, but without the social risk that this brings with it. The second is that it will reduce the black market in marijuana, thus reducing crime. Absolutely not true. In any of the states that have legalized recreational marijuana, it has not impacted the black market at all. This has not occurred in any of the states. In fact, last year, California had to appropriate $100 million to help legal, pro legal marijuana cultivators and retailers. Why? Because their revenue estimates were so far low down because of the black market competition. Now, when we think of black market competition, we think, oh, you know, there's illegal people from the cartels coming and selling illegal marijuana. Well, we've got to remember in those states, it's no longer illegal to consume marijuana. What is illegal is to sell it without paying the taxes. So law enforcement in those states are really becoming enforcers of revenue laws, not laws against drugs. They're after those illegal marijuana profiteers in terms of the state's viewpoint because they didn't do the legal process and they're not paying taxes. Think about that for a minute. That's exactly what it is. That's why in those states, most police officers ignore marijuana use. In Connecticut, marijuana use in small amounts has been legal for many years. So police officers aren't going to really be concerned about that. They will be concerned about somebody swaying in the traffic and things like that, you know, driving intoxicated or under the influence. But they're not going to be concerned anymore about selling marijuana. Who's selling? They're not going to go after black market sellers, because they're going to realize it's just about the money. What really is the difference between somebody who's authorized by the state to sell marijuana and somebody who grows some plants in their black yard and sells marijuana? Taxes, not the quality of the product. The potency of the product, by the way, which I'll address, is much higher in the legal retail market. So it doesn't reduce the black market. In fact, the black market also continues to flourish in other states, including Colorado, which is the flagship state for legalization of marijuana. The third is a 3% tax on grocery receipts that go to the municipalities. How many people are not aware that this revenue is restricted by statute on how it can be used? Very restricted. The city would have to receive these funds, put them into a special fund, and use them for particular purposes, street script, streetscape improvements, and other neighborhood developments and communities where cannabis retailers reside. So you can't take that money and go and improve downtown Torrington Street. You have to take that money and use it in the area where the cannabis retailers are. Okay? The second one is education programs and/or youth employment and training programs in municipalities. What does this mean? I could say that, oh, that means we can give some money to the school system. Is that what this means? We have to understand, none of these definitions have really been worked out yet because towns, no towns have received money for that. But usually state law, when they refer to school systems, say, public or non-public schools. And as they say, educational programs, and they hop onto it and they talk about, you know, training programs in municipalities, different types of things. But it doesn't specifically say we can give that money to the local Board of Education, which is unusual. Third is services for individuals living in a municipality who were released from Department of Correction, custody, probation, or parole. Fourth, mental health or addiction services. We're probably going to need more of that, so you can use that money for that. Youth service bureaus and municipal juvenile review boards, we will probably need more money for that, so you can use money for that. And community service engagement efforts. I'm not sure what the state means by that, it's not defined. I, you know, maybe it's anti-drug discussions, I don't know, it's not defined in state statute. So some of the negative effects of recreational marijuana in the community. First, there's the traffic concerns. One, of course, is driving under the influence. The states that have legalized marijuana have seen an increase of driving under the influence. That's the reason that AAA, American Auto Vehicle Association, has opposed legalization of recreational marijuana in every state that it has been presented in. Because it does result in more traffic accidents and hazards on the road. Secondly, in terms of traffic, in terms of municipality, Torrington has to consider traffic flow. A medical marijuana facility is completely different than a recreational marijuana facility. The traffic is going to be much heavier, the type of clientele coming in is going to be totally different. It's going to, if we're the only center in the Northwest, I know Winston's considering legalizing it, but I don't know what the other towns around us are doing. If we become one of the focal points in the Northwest corner, you can expect a lot more traffic coming into wherever these facilities are located. Okay, that's why I think the legislature recognized that by allotting within the first month of the opening of a recreational marijuana store, that the store owner would have to cover the first $50,000 in police expenses to manage traffic. After that first month, if there is still increased traffic, it falls to the city to cover the overtime expenses for the police officers. The other negative effect is edibles. Edibles are replacing the joint. We always see people, we talk about marijuana, smoking on a joint. That's becoming a thing of the past. Okay, yes, there's still joints around, but that's not the big moneymakers for marijuana retailers. It is the edibles, the gummy bears, the brownies, the cookies. And what happens when you have edibles like this around the house? State facts have proven, and I have a few facts listed in here from other states, that edibles lead to more emergency room visits by children. Also, the edibles are marketed, and there's no particular ban within our state law, which I find unusual, because the previous version of the bill that was, was not originally passed, Senate Bill 12, 1201 was passed. There was limitations on how the marketing of gummy bears and edibles could be done to help protect children. That language is removed from, and kind of rewritten slightly from the original bill. So we have concerns, I have concerns as a resident of Torrington, what the impact is going to be on the children. Is Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, like other states, going to see an increase in children being brought to the emergency room because mom and dad or cousin Bob forgot and left the gummy bears on a dining room table? And they grabbed a few thinking they were candy? And that's what happens constantly. I like to, if you had, Colorado was the first state to legalize recreational marijuana, as I mentioned before, and provides the best numbers for the impact on children. Between 2013 and 2018, emergency calls, emergency calls for youths aged eight and younger increased 126% in 2018. Youth cases represent half of all marijuana exposure calls based on the Rocky Mountain Poison and Drug Center. Similar problems with youth exposure, again, is reflected in all the other states. One other thing is addiction, psychosis, and violence. Yes, we're not in Bacchanades when we have Reefer Madness, but science has, and Yale, our own doctors at Yale came up to testify against this legislation, experts on addiction services, that recreational marijuana, especially that product that's legally produced, is far more potent and addictive than the marijuana of our Woodstock generation. When I was in high school in the seventies, that marijuana had 1% to 3% THC in it. Okay, now, under state law and in other states, that THC level, level that makes you high and leads, can lead to addiction, is 30%. So it's gone from 1% to 3% to 30%, and it concentrates, and edibles, it can be 60%. Okay, there, the new state laws allow TH levels of this magnitude, but they also allow, it's a unique piece of land in the legislation, it also allows the state to change the levels of THC usage based on the business market recommendations. So, and you know, as we get people addicted and with the THC being higher and higher, it's a business model, bring them back. Some people have even referred to legalized marijuana as the big new, big tobacco. And the reason is, we have to realize that the marijuana business alone in Colorado brings in $1.5 billion a year. I have a member of my own family, of my extended family, who recently, in the last year and a half to two, has taken a very high six-figure salary job with a recreational marijuana business in Europe. She lives, she lives in Weston, but in Europe, that they now also have market share, major market share in Canada. And their next move is for the United States. They're now working on a strategy to move into the United States. It is a multi-billion dollar industry, just like big tobacco was. Let's get them addicted, let's get them coming back. These are issues that planning and zoning usually doesn't hear about. But unfortunately, the process we followed in the city leaves it on your doorstep. Is this the kind of community we want to have in our town? One where we're going to worry about children being addicted, abused, rushed to Charlotte Hungerford Hospital? Or we're going to send out a message to our teens in our town saying, you know what, marijuana is okay. As soon as you reach 21 years of age, go at it, it's okay, don't worry about it. We're not naive enough to know that. Once this recreational marijuana gets out there, it's going to be available to everybody in the high doses. And that's proved again, I didn't list those numbers in here, but I could provide easy facts to you from other states of the increased usage of teen marijuana usage, problems that they have with teens, drops in educational performance, those numbers are all available. But the forces at the state Capitol who are pushing this legislation really didn't know all this, but they ignored it. There were other alternatives. One was revenue. You know, I live by, by a motto that the end doesn't justify the means. Yes, we need revenue, we need jobs. All right, so let's sell our soul out and the health of our people in our state to get that revenue and jobs. That, that, that's where the means is wrong. There's other ways to get revenue and jobs in our state. This is also an interest, especially I think to the Planning and Zoning Commission, environmental impact on the community. And I included an article from the Connecticut Mirror in 2021, and I just, it's an easy, good article. It was written by an attorney from Colorado, who, their law was passed by open referendum, statewide referendum. So that amendment was passed, and his attorney was a champion of that amendment. Back, I think it was in 2013, I'd have to check the date. Now he writes, as Connecticut was preparing to legalize it, "Don't do it was the biggest mistake in my life that I ever made." He talks about the impact on the quality of life in Colorado, what it meant and the impact on the businesses and the communities. But at the end, and I think this is probably particular in the realm of planning and zoning, is he talks about the pollution that the cultivating facilities create, the massive use of illegal, well, I don't want to say they're illegal, but since the FDA does not supervise marijuana cultivation, based on his testimony and other articles that I've read, they use pesticides, agents against mold, et cetera, that are harmful to human consumption. There is no regulation on that in many of these states. Connecticut has no regulation on that in our state. So if this Planning and Zoning Commission decides to go ahead with this, especially with the cultivation process, I would take a second look at energy uses, which is huge, gigantic amount of energy. And the state actually, the law requires that these cultivators report their energy usage to the state every year, and that they try to find alternative energy sources, because it's a massive amount of energy. So that, and the pollution, the water pollution, the water table pollution from the washing of the marijuana plants to get the mold and other things off of them before they're cultivated and sent to market should be another concern that I think would fall in the preview, purview of this, of this commission. So with that said, I won't go on and read the article, you have some of my notes, I think. I had to say it, I think I'm kind of disappointed the city council, maybe the planning and zoning did not have a public hearing prior to the movement of this and proposal of this regulation. You had some meetings, cross committee meetings, I understand that. But somewhere there should be, before I reached the P and Z, there should have been some input from the public on, on this issue, because it's a much broader issue than what zone we're going to allow a retailer in. What's, you know, as I mentioned here, the decision you make will not only impact zoning your business, it will impact the quality of life in the, in the town of Connecticut, will impact our children, our teens, our educational system, it will have all that. And again, the last point I want to stress is that as adults, as we say, it's okay to smoke that joint or to eat those edibles, our teenagers are going to follow. They're going to follow. And I have one last note. And I'm not sure how it is for, maybe you know how it is for liquor stores, but consumption of marijuana is 21 or above, recreational marijuana. However, if you're 18, you can work in a marijuana retailer. So how many 18-year-olds are outside, out of high school by then? You know, you're right on that brink, which calls for the potential abuse. So I just wanted to think about that too, and look at that as you examine the statute. I'm glad to answer any questions or provide any further material.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any commissioners, how many questions from Mr. Reynolds?
I have some comments, but I'll reserve them until after.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address. Being none. All right, go ahead, Greg.
Okay, just a couple of things. Mostly addressing some of Dave Reynolds' comments. We had these group meetings, Mr. Reynolds. For the purposes of the sort of deciding what would be the best way to get public opinion. And we thought that to have um an established set of regulations. Uh, that speaks to how we would address it. Would give uh the best alternative to the discussion. We don't really want to get involved. In the discussion of legality and the legality issue has been passed by state. So what we're faced with is we either do something or we don't. And legality is crossing all borders. So if we don't do anything, it does nothing for our town. And by that, I mean that where there, where there are stores, including the stores right now in Great Barrington. You know, you go there, you pick it up, you bring it home, you're fully legally able to use it. The question is, how do we impact that? So we can take the view of sort of. We don't want to be a part of it, therefore we're making a social statement of some sort. However, that doesn't provide you with a lot of means to have some impact. On um the, the issue of marijuana, marijuana or cannabis usage. So to my point, I looked at it from the standpoint of how do I take something? That will provide funds to the town and then use those funds to counter. That. And I know that you're not going to convert every person out there, but. When you talk about youth services, one of the things I particularly like, by the way, about the regulations, they restrict the use of the funds. I think that's excellent because up in Massachusetts, they don't. So guess what happens? Funds go into the general fund and they get blown, blown away by, you know, buying a new fire truck or whatever. This at least makes you focus. And some of the very social services, one of the ones you mentioned are very important, mental health issue, youth services. And this is where I think that we can have the greatest impact. Because the money that we generate from the activities of either growing or growing and retail. Can be then spun around into these uh groups for the purpose of trying to educate people. On sort of the issue of cannabis and. It may be something that you can actually make work for you, you know, in terms of education. Anyways, the issue regarding towns that have given knows, knows to uh. If you, and I don't know how many, but I know there are plenty of them who have. Chosen no, not for any other reason than it was in conflict with the federal law. And the reason the federal law is in conflict with state laws today. Is because they have signed treaties at the UN on controlled substances, which unfortunately. Cannabis is still listed as one of the controlled substances. So Greenwich has one example, they announced that the reason they, they said no was simply because they didn't want to be in conflict with federal law. And the federal law is a problem because they have to somehow convince other people who sign those treaties. To change the, the schedule of drugs and get cannabis off of it. So um. I think the other thing is the black market will exist as it does today. One of the things that may be beneficial, and this is all, a lot of what we talked about is hypothetical in large part. But um. The cannabis that's showing up in the black market today is laced with fentanyl and other things that are much more dangerous. For uh people who are in that sort of lifestyle. And so I guess the legalization from a standpoint of what positive thing does it have? Potentially, it could be that you have controlled substance, it's regulated by the state. And it's clean and it's understood to be clean and it's managed that way so that at least the product that's entering your town. Is, is less apt to create serious illness and, and people were got. Um, with, as opposed to black market substance. So it's a difficult, I, I want you to understand it. There was an awful lot of discussion here when we had our meetings. It's a difficult topic to get your head around. But I think one of the basic things you just have to understand is that it's here. And whether we say yes to retail or growers. Isn't going to change the fact that the people who live in this town will go and buy it, will come into this town. And will use it as they so desire to use it. We will have to write ordinances, we'll have to do it, whether we do it or not, whether we allow it or not. The ordinance, ordinances of use, where you can use it, you know, not in the park, not over here and with that. They'll all have to be done as far as the uh training that the police officers, we talked about that. You know, so I think we have one, one police officer is trained in how to determine whether someone is under the influence of. Of cannabis or, you know, a drug of that style. Driving, that takes a specific set of training, um courses and such, and it costs quite a bit of money. And we're, we're going to have to do it anyway. So the fact is that we're kind of stuck with, what do we do? When we're, we're faced with, we can't object to it. We can't stop it. It's done. We didn't have the juice to be able to convince the state to not do it. And there was a lot of public hearings then. I'm sure you know about those, David. So we're at a point now where I would prefer to take the road. Of trying to use it in the best way possible for the community. That's just kind of where I'm at.
Greg, just a comment on, I know you addressed the components where these funds can be funneled to. And one of the, the aspects of that uh distribution was brought up. For example, if the town is giving to these five, just for conversation, these five agencies. And those five are now. Part of this three percent tax uh revenue. Then they can eliminate some of that funding going to those separate entities and fund another component. The fire department, the police department.
The training.
The training and so forth. You know, and again, as Greg mentioned, you know, these meetings were very intense, a lot of conversations took place. And, you know, I concur with Greg's standpoint here this evening too. You know, the, the comment was, this could be the Home Depot scenario of Torrington. Where, you know, through years, Home Depot was courting Torrington for a location. It never happened. It's right over the border and everybody in Torrington shopping there. You know, even in this scenario, first and foremost, my personal opinion, I'm not an advocate of. Any drug related components. But, but as Greg brought to the table and then as this, this, the, excuse me, this discussion is taking place. This isn't going anywhere. You know, so whether it's in our backyard, you're still, if it's here, we're generating some tax revenue and hopefully it can enhance the. The operation of the town, otherwise people are still jumping over the borders to, to purchase. You know, one of the components in the conversations was a lot of this revenue stream. That, for example, Great Barrington is receiving right now is from all the surrounding towns and states. Close to them, you know, what's going to happen is once this is legalized in up and, let me rephrase it, once this is up and running in Connecticut. The Great Barringtons of the world and so forth are going to, their sales are going to start diminishing down. You know, it's all going to be spread out, you know, and it's not like we're having a super Walmart in the backyard and selling cannabis products. So.
And I, you know, I say the other thing is, you know, what if Colorado didn't have the amendment, didn't have the, the, you know, the. The wherewithal or the goal to approve it, as you said, that lawyer, you know, sad that he did it. On the, on the one hand, I look at that and I go, you know what, Colorado is a big state. And being as big as it is, the borders are broad. We don't have the luxury of broad borders. So we have Massachusetts that's done it, New York, it's done it. And Rhode Island, I think, has done it. You know, I don't remember if they have, but in any case, our borders are short. I mean, for, even if we don't, if the state of Connecticut didn't legalize it. It was coming into the state every day. And so. It's, I look at it as being a little different and what I really want to focus on is how do I make it work for us? In the most beneficial way. And I don't mean how do I buy a new, you know. Ambulance or how do I buy, I'm trying to spin this around. How do I impact youth? How do I take that money that we can gather? And put it into youth services and mental health services and addiction services? To help those people shake it or not get involved with it. I think that's the way to go. You're not going to stop it. It's coming in anyway.
I, I think, just to add to that point, just to, just to clarify, and this hasn't really come up in, in the discussion. Um, delivery or like ordering from somewhere else and delivery, we cannot prohibit that.
Can't prohibit.
So you, within Connecticut.
Right.
So if you order from another community, you cannot prohibit delivery services from delivering to your house.
So simplify.
Winston's approved it.
Yeah.
Thomaston's approved it. So what's going to wind up happening is people from Torrington are going to order from. Those and just, and so all the revenue is going to those towns from people purchasing it here. And that came up. A lot in the discussions of our joint meeting.
Greg, one of the key components you had mentioned in. To really reinforce that the black market, in my opinion, is always going to be there. There's a certain clientele that's purchasing from the black market. Which the product is potentially not pure, you know, tainted with something. The plus side of all this, in my estimation is, this is, like he said, it's regulated. You know, if somebody is going to go in there is the professionals, like most of you in this room would visit a professional. Uh, retail establishment. You know, I don't think anybody in this room would be, you know, going out to corner park and say, hey, you know, give me this, give me that. You know, so that with that. Kind of structure and regulations in place, I think that's, that's a big key factor in this big picture.
I would have liked to have seen alcohol done the same way. In other words, rather than, the only reason I say that is. The same thing, if we had taxed alcohol and allowed that money to go into public health services. Of same, the same limits that we are looking at now, potentially we could add an impact on. At least some, some form of impact. Now we can't really do much of anything. We have to fund it ourselves if we have to do it, if we're going to do it. So somewhat of a paradox, but it's. Just try to spin it to the best, to your best advantage. That's the way I look at it.
And Sue, I think if you could only hope that education, more education is put out there. For, you know, just the effects of marijuana and also with the edibles. Driving at home with parents, they should really be conscious of. You know, if they're going to have it in their home, you know, so perhaps advertising can be helpful in Connecticut if it's go, it goes ahead and. And, and conversation, you know, people talking amongst themselves and getting more educated and, and. In a positive way.
And what's some discussion, there was some discussion brought up as well. I think David, you have indicated, you know, the vagueness of some of the uses in terms of, can we, can we actually? You know, push that money this way or that way. In that, in our conversations, they said that, that it's kind of like, um, do it and you, you're, you'll, if there's a question, then you'll be questioned. And if you, if there's no question, then you're going to be able to go ahead and use those funds in the manner that you choose to. But I think that. The group of people that we talked to and some were coached that I think became much more understandable about the possibility of. A benefit as opposed to um, somewhat of a degrading of the situation, but. I think everyone was kind of focused on, how do we? Yeah, how do we take what we can get out of this and use it to tamp it down or to, to manage it as best we can? Um, you're not going to stop people, you know, in grand numbers, but, you know, the person who's addicted could be helped. You know, the person who has mental health issues can be helped. You know, youth services, you know, we maybe, we're desperately in need of funds for youth services. And it was our budget last year, thirty grand, it's peanuts. You know, if it wasn't for Powell and some of the other organizations in town who try to impact young kids. This is an opportunity in my mind to take money. That we weren't given when we had alcohol come into the scene. Now we have this as an option. All I can hope for is that it doesn't go away. You know, I hate to see the state, you know, put the carrot out there, have us all being, you know. Like in the food and then have the food taken away.
I mean, you know, the, the big, you know, the big point, I think of our, of, of, of. Segment of our discussion in the joint meetings was, you know. The recreational cannabis users are here in the city. Are, are we going to be the ones to, to regulate it and, and get that three percent or are we going to send that to other communities?
You know, and along those lines, one of the biggest components that we discussed was police presence, police activity. Getting reports in from surrounding states and so forth, you know, even. When the methadone clinic came to town, when the um medical marijuana facility came to town. I'll be straight up with you. There was opposition, like what's going to happen with the police presence and so forth. Fortunately, there's really zero impact. You know, there was one case, I believe it was, I believe in the Massachusetts area, somebody was robbed in the parking lot.
One incident.
One incident.
I mean, our chief, our chief talked to the, the chief at the Massachusetts level. And they've been doing it now for a couple of years. And basically. The response that the Massachusetts gave him was that it really hasn't been an impact. You know, so um.
You know, and along those lines, you know, and again, the methadone clinic, the, the medical dispensary. For the most part, if you don't know these locations there, you don't even realize it. You know, they're, they're pretty low key. I mean, a retail facility. I've actually been in the one in Great Barrington, very high security, very well kept. You know, they're very structured.
That's a requirement, right. High security requirement in Massachusetts. And I think we can look at that as potentially.
There are some, there are security requirements in, in the, in this giant book too.
Right. But. That's all I wanted to add.
Anyone else give you some perspectives?
Well, I mean, I just think we're going to try to do the best job that we possibly can to.
Well, and again, these are looked at on a case by case basis.
Yeah, that's why we, it's why we decided to go, well, A, because it was the simplest, because we already have the overlay zone for medical. But it, the, an overlay zone is a little different than just approving a site plan. Overlay zone, we have maximum discretion in, in to say no on, on a project to, to not adopt an overlay zone. That's not, that's not approving or dis- disapproving a project. That's adoption of the zone. It, it gives us maximum, maximum discretion.
Anyone else in the remote end? Donovan, you have anything? Tom, Jim?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to make um one statement, certainly uh. As the father of two teenagers and two pre-teens, um. The effect on uh marijuana, on youth is very important to me. But I, it, as you folks have already capably described. That horse has been out of the barn for so long now. And, and it's so widely available, this, the, this product. My individual responsibility to watch after my kids. To pay attention to what they're doing, to pay attention to the, to the, their friends and, and who they're hanging out with. None of that will change uh for me as a parent. I would have to be doing those things whether. Uh, whether one of these retail shops sets up here in Torrington or not. So I, I concur with the, with the, my fellow commissioners in terms of. This horse is so far out of the barn that we need to, we need to do what we can now. And individually, I, I have to take, I accept that responsibility as a parent. And, and as I'm sure, you know, ever, all good parents do and, and what we do here tonight won't change that basic fact, so. I, I appreciate my, my fellow commissioners. I, I think all of the, all the remarks are, 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 are well done and um thanks. For the, for the minute.
Thank you, Donovan. Anyone else?
Um, so, so I would recommend, I actually think Tom brought up some, some very good points about, about uh. Take grabbing a couple of definitions and cleaning up our cultural definition. I, I would like to do that between this meeting and next, so I'd, so I'd recommend that we. I I would like to do that between this meeting and next, so I'd recommend that we continue the public hearing to our August twenty fourth date.
All right.
Sure. We want to make that.
All right, the time is eight fifty one, do I have a motion to continue?
I have a motion, I'll put a motion for continue.
Thank you, I have a second, all is in favor?
All right.
All right, so thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to agenda item number five, old business, we have none. Number six, new business, a special exception, twenty two dash zero six, it's site plan fourteen fifteen applicant prospect investments group LLC, location one ten Scoble Street. Proposal building addition to existing motor vehicle repair facility, expansion of nonconforming structure. We need to set a public hearing date, the suggested date is August twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, have a motion?
Yeah, so move.
All is in favor?
All right.
Opposed, so moved. Moving on to the agenda, item number seven, correspondence, a zoning light violation update, I believe we have.
Yep. I'm just I'm just laughing because they just sat through that.
Oh.
See, see you next month.
All right, thank you.
Keep it for next month.
Sorry.
Can I make a comment on the plate?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we are.
I put everything away.
That's okay.
It's over here, it's over here, yeah. Yes.
The solar, the solar farm up on Pearl Road.
Oh, what a mess. Oh, yeah, 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 you know what?
With the landscaping there, is that something?
I brought that up.
Yeah, we've been, we've been so so slammed with with Blake complaints lately. I I'll have to make sure she, Ashley prioritizes that.
So they, so the requirement is that they're supposed to keep up on that?
Oh, it's it's both, well, so the issue is we don't have a site plan to to enforce because we didn't have to do any approvals. So that's the only way we can go after it is for Blake.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think, I think when we.
We we can also complain to the.
The state. Absolutely, that, and you know, the state should be, their feet should go into fire. They're not allowing us to permit.
Right.
So if you're going to permit, then you start taking care of it.
Yeah, and and there is likely a whole list of conditions on the on deep.
Oh, I'm sure there is. My recollection is when Mario was here, I asked the question, who's going to mow the lawns? You know, keep the weeds down and all the shrubs are dead.
We'll have to make make.
And one other question, what are the regulations with people parking on their lawn all the time, just making the driveway of the sidewalk?
So.
Whatsoever, is that?
I I.
Against the rules.
I've been told and.
So much of.
Yeah, we've had a few of these issues with public works. And they said literally unless they're breaking the sidewalk or they catch them doing it, they they can't enforce it. Yeah, yeah, so for for us, we don't allow, our regulations don't allow for parking any more than fifty percent of the front setback area.
Yeah.
That's all we can really afford in force, they have to be doing at least a half an acre of disturbance to, we had an issue on Red Mountain recently. And someone cut a driveway and then they, what they, the engineering department asked if we could enforce it. I said, well, that's probably only about a tenth of an acre of disturbance, so no, I mean, I can hit them for, if if something, if there's some erosion issue, I can hit them for erosion control, but, you know, but yes. Unfortunately, they got to catch them, yeah. Yeah. So this this enforcement report, it's the first one we've done since December. So so I I had to meet with Nate and kind of catch him up on things I was working on and.
Remind Ashley about Mr. Rose.
Yep, we talked about it this morning.
Give me an update because they're all asking me.
Yep. I'll do this, I'll do that offline since it's since it's Blake.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think this ballooned twenty seven new cases, but it's been seven months. And we're just getting Nate into things, so you'll see, you'll see a lot more of these clothes over over the, you know, next few months, I think, into the fall.
You got the enforcer with you now?
We got the enforcer. Yeah, yeah, he's been doing a pretty good job. I asked him to actually come in and meet everybody in August. So we'll have him, let him come in for for the August meeting.
All right.
And then I I just handed out this quarterly newsletter, had had want to send it around, some some good interesting cases. I mean, we won't go over it, but just good reading material, good good summaries on Supreme Court cases and some other, some other law related issues.
We're good?
Yeah.
All right, the time is eight fifty six, moving on to agenda item number eight, a German. Thank you, all is in favor?
All right.
All move, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, everybody.